Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of November 7th, 2016. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of our chambers. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk calls that item. The applicant and those in favor will speak first, then those who are opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should please start by stating his or her name, address, and whether speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a reminder, the timer will sound after four minutes. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to a German, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. This month it's a little different, and maybe Theresa will share the schedule for open mic after we're done here in a second. Agendas are located outside the entrance to chambers. Parking passes are available should they be needed for the lot just north of us, and will Theresa please call the first item of business?
Yes, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. We do have a couple of announcements. Since we only have two council meetings this month, we will be having open microphone today and the 21st. Due to the Veterans and Thanksgiving holiday, the City Council will not meet on November 14th or Monday, November 28th. Our public hearing consent agenda, our items 1 through 19.
Is there anyone here who would like to testify on any of these items? I know we have some appointees as well today. Want to bring up the members who've been appointed for the Planning Commission?
It'd be nice to have them at least introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure.
Team Spirit.
Team Spirit.
Could you please state your name and address? And go ahead.
My name is Tom Beckeas. My address is 8217 Windmill Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Dean Finnegan, 1936 Ryan Street.
Okay.
Hello, Tracy Edgerton, 6801 Stone Brook Parkway.
Sandra Washington, 2025 Soul Street.
Welcome. Almost half a Planning Commission potentially stands before us today.
If we just confirm them, does it won't have to leave the room right away?
Any questions of our appointed appointees?
Sure. Sure. How soon, now you get confirmed today, how soon do you start work? Is it this week?
I believe I'm the first appointee, and my first meeting would be November 30th.
November 30th, okay.
It's my understanding that the three of us would be effective January 1st.
Cindy, did you have a question?
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if each of you just gave a few minutes, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Planning Commission.
Go ahead.
Again, I'm Sandra Washington, and I'm interested in the Planning Commission because I am looking for a way to serve Lincoln and Lancaster County, become more involved in civic policy. I have a background in planning, urban and regional planning, with an emphasis in natural resources planning. Until about 18 months ago, I worked for the National Park Service, and when I left the agency, I was Associate Regional Director with responsibilities for planning, environmental compliance, cultural resources preservation, and a host of other things. So I have an extensive background in planning. Both of my planning degrees come from a School of Natural Resources and in the College of Agriculture, so I have a pretty broad experience and coursework and everything from agronomy, ag economics, to all natural resources and policy kind of things.
Thank you.
Dean Finnegan, I am a military brat, and I say that lovingly, and then I married a Navy pilot, so I grew up all over the country. And when we moved to Lincoln, I never thought I'd live anywhere more than three years, and here I am 40 years later, still in Lincoln. But what struck me about Lincoln was how organized it was and how well the planning was in this community. And a few years later, I was given the opportunity to serve as Bill Harris's Chief of Staff, and one of the first things that happened was the siding of a regional shopping center at 20th and Pine Lake Road. There was nothing there, and a shopping center on Cornhusker and 27th. And I was able to watch that grow until today, and I really fell in love with planning. And for the last 19 years, I've been Executive Director, President, and CEO of Leadership Lincoln, and every year I made sure there was a session, all-day session, on planning because citizens need to understand planning and not wait until the bulldozers are at the front door. And so we always had a session on that, and when I retired last year, I missed that a bit. And when this opportunity came up, it combines my love of planning and I'm kind of a community process geek, and, don't laugh, Tom, Tom's one of our alums. And the comprehensive plan is a great example of bringing people together in a community process, so.
Thank you.
That's my, thank you.
My name is Tom Beckeas. For the last 10 years or so, I've worked in commercial real estate here throughout the state of Nebraska and actually beyond the state of Nebraska too. So, and I hold a broker's license here in the state of Nebraska. So this is kind of what I think about a lot, and this is what I really enjoy doing with my time. You know, I've been, I'm from Lincoln, born and raised, and I have been very privileged and lucky to live in this great community, but luck doesn't make a community great. Work does. Planning does. And making sure that we have a solid understanding as to what people can reasonably expect from our town when it comes to development, when it comes to homeowners knowing what they can reasonably expect when dealing with the city. I think those are the things that make, one of the things that makes Lincoln great. It may not be, land use may not be for everyone. That may not be the first thing people think about when they think about what makes a community great, but I do, and that's why I'm particularly interested in serving on this commission.
Thank you.
Again, Tracy Edgerton, like Sandra, I'm very privileged to consider how to give back to this community. Unlike Sandra, I have virtually no experience in the planning area. I'm an attorney by education but have spent most of my professional life in the nonprofit community. And I think that there's a lot going on in Lincoln right now. There's been a great cohort of folks coming together from both the private sector, the public sector, and the nonprofit sector, and I think that all three of them play a very important role in how our community continues to develop. My husband and I moved here about 15 years ago consciously because this is the community where we wanted to raise our families. We were both located in other areas and felt like this was the best fit for us long-term. And as a result, I feel like I have a very vested interest in how our community continues to grow, trying to balance economic development issues with neighborhood issues and the things that continue to make our community a really strong place to raise families.
I think you're gonna get baptized by fire.
Just saying.
John and Carl?
Well, I want to thank all of you. Planning Commission is really one of our most important commissions or boards, and to serve is a real honor for you as well as to the city, so appreciate your willingness, and we'll see that a check comes every other week.
Go on.
Yeah, and I would echo John's thanks, and also to let you know how important not only you are for the community, because you are. When you have your hearings, I think there's probably more time that your body is able to devote to the issues that are at hand, and so it's really beneficial to the community that they have that opportunity to come forward and issues that are of concern in terms of developments, then those can be addressed hopefully. And because we really rely upon that, and you know, I know when we get our packets with information, it has the notes of what goes on in Planning Commission, and we not only hear what staff's doing, but we hear the questions and comments that members have. So thanks for serving. We'll be watching. Okay.
Anything else? Yes, thank you very, very much. We do take stock of your opinions and value them greatly, and I'd also just like to mention, because Cindy brought up the start, Roy brought up the start dates, that we have one position that Sandra Washington is feeling that was vacated by Kathy Beecham who moved, and then the other three who are taking over for three commissioners who've been with the Planning Commission for a very long time, and I'd like to thank them publicly for their service too. They agreed to even stay beyond their terms to get the city through a comp plan minor update, and their service has been tremendous over the years. Those commissioners are Janel Lust, Michael Cornelius, and Lynn Sunderman, really tremendous assets to the city. And I imagine that six years down the road, we will be saying the same kinds of things about you all and appreciate the longevity of this commitment. It's a six-year appointment, and it really is an important one. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can sit. Would anyone else like to testify on any items on our consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, please call the next item, Theresa.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items 1 through 5 were introduced by Raybold.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Jane and seconded by John, discussion? Please call the roll.
May it amend.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, that's right. Can I get a motion to amend on number one?
I move amendment, motion to amend number one, removing the reappointment of Dan G. Peterson for the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Board. He has asked his name to be removed.
Motion to amend moved by Roy and seconded by John, discussion? All right, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And now on the main motion?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 6 and 11 through 17 were introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 20, manager application of Ryan Rosenstiel for Small Town Bar, Inc., doing business as Rosie's Sports Bar and Grill at 1501 Center Park Road, Suite 300.
Ryan, did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be? Thank you.
Ryan Rosenstiel, 2701 Shelley Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
I've been running Rosies since we opened, and just recently bought out my Tim Rowland, the guy who previously owned it, and now we're just doing all the familiarities to do it. I've been doing this for 20-plus years, so very familiar with all the rules and laws and have not had any problems since.
Great. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you so much for coming down today.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next are items 21 and 22. Application of Country Inn and Suites by Carlson for a Class I liquor license at 5353 North 27th Street and the related manager application of Deb Carroll. Hi, Deb.
Hello.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Can you state your name and address for us and tell us?
Deborah Carroll, 1623 South 27th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm here to represent the Country Inn and Suites, Lincoln North. We had an onsite restaurant, which was Beacon Hills, that recently relocated to Omaha, and we relied on their liquor license previously because they managed our banquet center and now will be managing our own banquet center, so we're in application of a liquor license for that.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Carl?
Yeah, just to clarify, so this is for the banquet center, not for the restaurant and the hotel?
Right now, the restaurant is not been completely decided on. There's a couple of other interested parties at this point, so due to that.
They'll be coming before us at the appropriate time?
If that's so. My understanding is if we apply for the liquor license, it does encompass the entire building. Is that correct?
Teresa?
I would have to check their application. It does include the whole building code in the same.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next are items 23 and 24. Application of Courtyard by Marriott, Lincoln Downtown Haymarket, for a Class C liquor license at 808 R Street, and the related manager application of Stephanie Watkins. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Watkins, 5400 Union Hill Road, and I am here for the liquor license of the Courtyard Marriott in the Haymarket due to ownership change.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, and our final item is item 25. Application of Gate 25 for the addition of a catering license to their Class C liquor license at 300 Canopy Street, Suite 140. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
I am Brandon Ackert of 2838 William Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Can you tell us a little about your application?
Well, we've run in Gate 25, we're about, start of our fourth year now, and we've been presented opportunities to do off-site liquor caterings for certain charity events or other groups in public spaces, and I've been not doing them but been thinking about starting that, so we thought, why not apply for a Class K and see if we can expand business a little bit more.
Any questions? All right, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
I'm sure I'd move approval of items 20 through 25.
Second.
Moved by John and seconded by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 26 is approving an agreement between the city, Lancaster County, and Bryan Med Center to provide lab services to employees for a four-year term of November 1st, 2016 through October 31st, 2020.
Good afternoon, I'm Bill Kastner, here from the Human Resources Department. Here to answer any questions you might have regarding this.
Any questions? Do you want to just tell us briefly which employees this typically applies to?
Sure. Typically, our first responders, police and fire. If there's a bloodborne pathogen exposure, they would go in and receive testing for HIV, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, it's at a reduced cost and done quickly. So it's been a win-win over the years. We've had it for four years now, and it's been very successful.
Are there any changes in this multi-year contract versus the last?
Just some of the tests that have been done, just technology, that's all.
Okay. All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item, Theresa.
All right, next would be item 27. Special permit 300C, appeal of Jeff Monzoo from the Planning Commission's approval of a special permit to allow for reconstruction of a non-conforming facility with waivers to increase the allowable square footage, increase the number of allowable parking spaces, and increase the number of allowable members residing on the premises on property generally located at 3601 Apple Street.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Monzoo, an architect with Leo Daley in Omaha at 8600 Indian Hills Drive in Omaha.
Tell us a little bit about this appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. If you want, you can fill that out after you're done, if you'd like, that's easier.
The original permit that was approved, special use permit approved, had 12 conditional items on it. At the time, we asked for removal of one of them, which was location of dumpster on the property, which we felt met city requirements for where it needed to be. We planned on screening it and following other design ordinances related to it. The project has gone through a long design process, working with the ECHO, the East Campus Community Organization, Neighborhood Association in terms of placement of the building on the property. We originally were at one end of the property, we've now moved to the other, which was more amicable to the Neighborhood Association and where we were going to be. The question of this is, we do have a service drive associated with this for deliveries and trash removal, and then we have the parking lot associated with the property. I do have current handouts, if it's relevant, for anybody to look at. These are just alternating, it's two and two, so it's personal. Basically, the question here, the condition on the permit, right now, this area right here is the service area, so this is Apple Street, this is Idowild Drive coming down, this will be the replacement facility, and this is the new parking associated with the house, member entry and the entry off of Apple Street right here. So the question here was the requirement to locate the dumpster, which we currently have located right here in the service area, back to the south edge of the property. Part of the reason for having that service drive was to get service traffic in and off our property relatively quickly and not mix with the member traffic. And one of the neighborhood requirements was to get as many parking stalls as we can on our property and also increase landscaping and landscaping buffers with the neighborhood. So we currently, the requirement for us was to achieve 67 or 68 parking stalls on our lot. We have 79 planned right now, so we're really trying to get as many of the members to park off-street and in our lot as we possibly can. We also allowed for perimeter landscaping at the edges, and we do have retention requirements taken care of on our property for runoff as well. So the issue was here, moving that dumpster to the back really started, in our mind, create some problems on our site in terms of organization, as well as the way the building is currently designed. Internally, we have kitchen services and dining services in this end so that everything could kind of go in and out, this entry on this end to the, which is the west end. So this was meant to kind of keep all that service traffic as far away from the single-family housing neighborhood as we can, as well as keep it out of our lot and mixing with the member traffic so that we didn't have to allow for clearances and driving clearances for trucks and so forth. So that's all that we're really asking, is that that particular provision be removed from the special use permit approval.
Questions? Jane?
With the neighbors, I guess, is that to the west side? The multifamily complex?
This is a fourplex right here, and then there's additional ones down the road, yes.
Were they notified of and invited to some of the meetings that you've held with the neighbors?
They were not part of the group, that's part of the ECHO group, so most of our discussions have been with the East Campus Community Organization, which involved the historic district around here. There's not been a specific discussion with them on how we're using our property. We do plan to have some neighborhood meetings to deal with some things there, but a direct conversation with the owner of that property has not occurred. I think there's been some concern in the past about just general neighborhood of having the fraternity next door to them in general.
Can you tell us a little bit about the, I guess, is it a trash compactor? Is it a self-contained?
No, the intent would be to have a regular commercial dumpster similar to what they have now. We have talked with the hauler for that, and the current pickup times for that, one of the early concerns was whether or not, you know, coming early in the morning and being close to their house. The times that they come are at 10 o'clock in the morning, they come Tuesdays and Fridays, so it's not early. Our own housemother residence is right in this corner, so we're actually closer to that for parts of our house than any of the neighbors. And like I said, we do plan to screen, we'll have a wall at the edge, we'll have landscaping. We do plan to follow the dumpster enclosure requirements that the city will require for that area, so.
Also, some of the neighbors have expressed a concern about some of the landscaping. Can you tell us a little bit of how, are you going to be removing some of the larger trees or what are the plans?
Actually, one of the other documents that I had, I don't remember if this is one of the ones that you have, this is a document that itemizes the trees that we are planning to maintain and retain that are existing right now. They are the darker ones right here, right here, right here, and along this edge. I know that in the letter that you got today that had the diagram of the site from Landscape Architect, he has been part of the group that we have been working with, and we have been working with him on some of his ideas. I think there's some fundamental disagreements just in terms of how certain things should be done. One of the trees he's concerned about is right here, and I think there's a concern from property owner about the longevity nature of that tree and how healthy it is. We do plan to keep as many of the ones as we can manage to do so. I know there's a sensitivity to the neighborhood because a number of the trees along the street were recently removed to redo the curbs and the sidewalks along that edge, so there is some sensitivity to losing mature trees, and we do plan to retain what we can, but we're also trying to maximize the use of our property and address some of the other concerns, which were to eliminate some of the on-street parking and increase the perimeter landscaping of our property itself.
So how many trees do you anticipate having to remove to, I guess, get the additional parking?
Well, there will be some trees along this back edge that will be removed, and there are a couple within the edges of the property here that will be removed, but we do plan to replace with new trees. It's not a matter of, we don't have a final landscaping plan, so there will be replacement. It's just a matter of some of the older, really mature trees, some of them are not in the best health, some of those will be removed.
So you mentioned that you were going to have some follow-up meetings with the neighbors and maybe invite the multifamily housing over?
The intent is that to continue to have updates with ECHO going forward, and we do have to still approach the Historic Preservation Commission regarding our project, which we intend to do. At the time, we went for the special use permit, we were still in the conceptual phases, but we needed to get that permit approved to make sure that the size of the house and the basic things that we wanted to have done could be carried forward. So we will be meeting with Historic Preservation Group, and we will still have design meetings with ECHO to have the neighborhood know the things that we are doing.
One more question. I know that some of the neighbors had talked a little bit about concerns with runoff. Can you tell how the civil engineers have redirected or are planning for that?
Yeah, so back to the drawing that I started with, Olson Associates, the town is our design partner for the site, and the intent here is, I think in the diagram you guys received today, there was a preference for wanting to control runoff towards Apple and take our site runoff and get it towards the north and west. The actual natural runoff for that property right now is to the southwest, so that's what we're intending to do. We've actually taken some of the activity zone that is on the, what would be the south side of the property between our parking and on the south side of the house. That is where our retention area will be, and the natural drainage flow then will follow the patterns that they do right now. We will have runoff for this drive. This drive does carry runoff to Apple Street. We will be meeting the requirements that we're allowed to for that runoff. Olson is very familiar with the requirements of the city and what we have to do, and they'll be on top of that. We do have some We do have some separation between where this drive is and what the backyard area will be for that, so we do have some grade climb here to get to that service area, which will be of the kitchen of the main floor of the house. And then this area will drain back to this retention area, all the parking drains across here to this retention area, and it will runoff naturally like it does now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Could you just point out where the dumpsters are located today? I recognize the building will be completely redone, but...
Yeah, the house sits right under here right now, and it sits right here right now. There's only one way in and out of the property right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
No, go ahead and have a seat, and we'll see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, are there any questions for staff?
If Jeff could come up and talk about what we're voting on with an appeal. They are appealing the condition that has been put on by the planning department, correct? And the planning commissioners?
They're appealing what was passed through the planning commission, is my understanding, and that the appeal itself just puts it before this body. But they are also asking, my understanding is, they're asking that two lines be struck as well. And that would take an amendment from this body to strike those two lines.
And the two lines pertain to the location of their dumpster, their trash receptacle?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeff?
I just wonder if you could tell us what lines those are?
Oh, those are lines 19 and 20 on page three. BI.
Thank you.
Okay, David, could you please come up?
David Carey with the planning department.
Could you explain if there are any rules about the location of the dumpster and the distance from neighbors that we need to be aware of? Because this obviously was something that was discussed at planning commission, I wasn't clear on whether or not there was a particular rule.
There are no hard and fast rules as far as where you locate something like a dumpster in this type of a use. The discussion that we had with the staff report and then with the planning commission was, where is the best location of a dumpster if you have an opportunity to redesign the site? From the staff perspective, we felt like keeping it as far away from any of the neighbors as possible, which was, would be that center of the site location that is in the staff report and what was actually approved by the planning commission, we felt like that was the best. The, there obviously is a consideration for putting it on the side for the ease of access, as well as the design of the building with the kitchen on the other side of the building. So this does come down to kind of a determining what is, what you feel like is the best between those two options. I certainly can see it both ways, we landed on the one being as far away from the surrounding properties as possible. That's really the gist of the process of the discussion for that issue for this site.
And just to follow up on a process question, were the neighbors, can you clarify if the neighbors were notified of the appeal or even of this action at planning commission?
We had regular notification of the special permit that went to planning commission, so the surrounding properties all received notice. The appeal process itself, as it's written, does not require notification to the adjacent property owners. However, in this case, the neighborhood association was contacted about the appeal, so they did have that information going into today.
But are the neighbors on the west a part of the Neighborhood Association?
I believe they are part of the neighborhood, I can't say if they are part of the ongoing meetings and things like that, I can't speak to that.
So the neighborhood association, presumably the president gets notified, but not necessarily the folks in the apartments to the west?
Correct, I can't speak to whether or not they sent out an email to all the different property owners.
Because that wouldn't be from you, that would be from the person who's appealing. Okay. Does the timing of garbage trash pickup affect the planning department's recommendation? Because that's certainly when I imagined, reading the report, that you were worried about neighbors and noise, I thought the trash was probably, pickup was probably happening at the time it happens at my house, which is sort of dark 30. 10:00 AM doesn't sound like too bad of a time.
I think that's a good point, and I'm glad that the applicant brought that up. The discussion with the planning commission at the time that that issue was being discussed, and there was some discussion about whether or not to make that change at planning commission as was requested by the applicant. They decided not to do that. But the timing of the pickup is what was discussed at that hearing, which is, you know, it is a lot different to hear a dumpster get emptied at 5:00 AM versus 10:00 AM. So I think that bit of information does help this discussion along.
Sorry, so you're saying they discussed the importance of timing, but not, they were unaware, they lacked this piece of information, the pickup is at 10?
Yeah, that wasn't clear at the hearing of the planning commission that there was a possibility of establishing that this, I think that is new information.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. Any other questions? Did you have a question, Cindy? No. Any other questions? All right, Trent? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Teresa, please call the next item.
That concludes our public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't offer the applicant a chance rebuttal, and that's important. Would you like to have any last words on this? Okay, thank you.
All right, that concludes our public hearing, then we can move into the voting session. All of two items. Public hearing resolution, item 26, the agreement between the city, Lancaster County, and Bryan Med Center for lab services. This was introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
We do have a motion to amend number one to accept a substitute agreement.
So moved.
Okay. Make it a second? We have the motion?
I believe it would have gone out in packets.
Jeff, do you have a copy of the substitute?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. What the amendment, amendment number one does is it replaces the agreement in total, but the substantive change is, there was a paragraph that was left out when we circulated the original draft, it went to the county attorney's office who noted that the paragraph was missing, we inserted that, and that was the primary change. It's essentially a boilerplate paragraph, but it was missing, so we added that. So there was no, there's no substantive change between the version that was circulated and the version that you have before you in amendment number one.
Where is that in here, do you know?
You don't, don't. I've got both versions.
You could just locate that, I think we'd all feel more comfortable voting on it if we knew which paragraph.
Okay.
Let me look at it, Jeff. Caleb pointed it out to me. I think it was the billing and notice addresses, maybe? Termination. Oh, this paragraph?
Yes.
Yep. Under paragraph five, billing and notice addresses, there was a paragraph missing before the addresses were given.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this was moved by Roy and seconded by Trent, any discussion on the motion? All right, please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And now on the main motion? Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 27 is special permit 300C, appeal of Jeff Monzoo from the planning commission's approval of a special permit at 3601 Apple Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy, discussion? John?
Just by way of disclosure, I want to mention that in my junior and senior year at the university, I was a member of Farmhouse. I didn't live there, but I was, and my dad's father was a charter chapter member here, and my brother lived there for three years, so. By way of disclosure.
Okay.
And they're good guys.
Cindy?
I move to amend the permit by striking lines 19 and 20 on page three.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Cindy and seconded by Roy. And could you repeat the lines again, did you say 19?
Lines 19 and 20, paragraph BI.
These are the only ones regarding the location of the dumpster.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I know that the applicant indicated that there standards they have to meet to build around and screen around the dumpster, which I appreciate very much, their willingness and their ability to do that, and it seems that the ease of entry and the flow makes sense, this is their, after all, their project. My concern, as I looked at this, when we, when I looked at what they, the move of the dumpster was, the distance that would have to be traversed in order to dump the trash, considering the kitchen personnel and the house personnel and the house occupants, and the fact that we quite frankly have snow in Lincoln, Nebraska, and ice, and it looks like there's a lot of parking spaces in between that. So having known a number of people who actually work as housemothers and cooks and employees in these types of houses, I appreciate actually having this location closer rather than further from the facility, and it also looks like it's plenty of distance from the neighbors with the retention plan in between that, so I happily bring the amendment.
Okay. Jane?
I have to concur because logistically, it just makes more sense to have the trash receptacle where most of the trash will be accumulating because of all the meal preparation, and with the adequate screening, landscaping, I think it makes a lot of sense, and also with the confirmation that the trash pickup is at 10:00 AM, that makes a lot of sense and seems reasonable.
And I would just agree as well that the 10:00 AM pickup time, which is information the planning commission did not have, seems like most people are at work or awake by that time, and probably the probability of disturbing neighbors who live closest to the building is low.
But these are college students, so some of them may not be awake at 10.
Well, they should be at class.
Yeah, right.
Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Is there anything we need to do further on the special permit, or is approving this motion to amend enough, Jeff? What is our, is that our final step, or do we have a?
We still have to vote on it.
Main motion.
Main motion, okay. Please call roll on the main motion.
And how do we vote on the main motion?
Right.
Because this is an appeal. But we're voting to approve it.
It's just approving the special permit.
The appeal, what it does is it puts it before you, and then you either pass it or you don't pass it.
And we'd be passing it with the deletion.
Yes.
So.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right.
Thank you, Teresa.
Welcome.
Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading, there are none. Public hearing, or I'm sorry, ordinance is third reading. Item 28, ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed 17 and a half million aggregate stated principal amount of general obligation, highway allocation fund pledge refunding bonds, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Seconded, seconded by Jane, discussion? Carl?
As I understand it, this saves us about $200,000 a year for nine years.
Ten.
The money that can go for roads projects throughout the community, sounds like a fortunate find.
All right, please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 29 is text amendment 16009, amending chapter 27.69 of the Lincoln municipal code relating to signs, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
By Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 30, approving the 48th and Leighton redevelopment agreement, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second. And by Roy, discussion? Cindy?
Totally excited about this project. Loving to see things coming out of the ground in northeast Lincoln. Thank you to all my colleagues for their support.
Carl?
Yeah, this, you know, we have had at least one or two other kind of aging old shopping centers that have been rehabbed, and when you travel around, you see more of that happening, and this is a great trend to help revitalize existing communities in our city and not just put everything on the fringes, so it's a great, great plan.
All right, please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 31, amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $5 million in TIF funds for the 48th and Leighton Phase 1 project, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trent and seconded by Roy, discussion? Just, we'll clarify that we heard last week during the public hearing that it's more likely to be 4.35 million in TIF funds, but should there be office use instead of residential use, it could go up as high as 5 million in terms of the relative valuation of the property, which is why we have the 5 million figure here. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 32, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 48th and Leighton Phase 1 project, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Cindy, discussion? Please call the roll.[1687.84]